I will call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for August 28, 2012. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman, Manukian, Najarian, Weber, Mayor Quintero.
Here. We have your report.
The agenda for the August 28, 2012, special meeting, public meeting of the City Council will close down Thursday, August 23, 2012, on the Golden Building, outside City Hall. This is a public hearing, Director of Community Development, continued from August 21, 2012, regarding Stage One and Two Design Review of Bloomingdale's located at 101 South Brand Boulevard. One is motion approving Stage One and Two Design Review, subject to comments and conditions of approval.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. What we have before you is perhaps one of the best testimonials of the power, the positive power and impact of the former California redevelopment law, and it's exemplified in the Renaissance at the Galleria, the reinvestment at the Galleria, as exemplified by this investment with the Bloomingdale's store. In historic types of redevelopment scenarios, retailers in particular would work with cities and get cities to make any number of concessions, primarily on the economic side of the ledger, originally with sales tax, then with tax increment, and in different ways, trying to find means by which to have local governments subsidize the cost of private development. Well, the beauty of redevelopment when properly applied, as it's been here in Glendale, what you have is the pebble in the pond and the ripple effect, where you have made an investment in attracting major retailers, major users and stakeholders into this district, and now they are feeding on their own momentum. And the loss of Mervyn's that had become a rather tired concept, and the reinvestment in Bloomingdale's is really such an endeavor. And what we are left with is not bringing to you a deal where we are looking to subsidize the developer, but rather bringing to you design review, for you to be able to make that qualified opinion about what you want the urban landscape to look like, which is a vastly different conversation than what agencies have had in the past, and it's something that we are very excited about, something the council should be very proud of. So with that, Mr. Kiesel, who did the work as the case planner, will take you through the elevations and answer your questions. Roger.
Right. Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council. Bloomingdale's is proposing to locate a department store in downtown Glendale, and they are requesting a combined Stage One and Stage Two Design Review approval this afternoon. Bloomingdale's will be located in a portion of the former Mervyn's building, located on the southwest corner of Brand Boulevard and Broadway. The department store is approximately 110,000 square feet, and will be located on the building's second and third floors, and then extending into what was until recently some tenant spaces in the Galleria, too. And then aside from an escalator lobby on the first floor, the first floor of the Mervyn's building will be devoted to another tenant. The project basically includes facade and interior renovations. The facade renovations will cover the existing brick facade with black porcelain tile on the base of the building, and then mosaic panels of glass, painted aluminum and white marble on the second and third floors. The entrance to Bloomingdale's is roughly centered in the Brand Boulevard facade of the building, and is highlighted by cable-supported glass canopy. The city's design review, or I'm sorry, the design studio has reviewed the project and noted that the project successfully responds to the downtown specific plan goals of encouraging the use of high-quality materials, visually accessing, visual access to the interior of the buildings, and redesigning of ground floors to attract both pedestrian traffic and uses. Just this afternoon, I put in front of your desks a letter from Crusoe Affiliated received regarding the project. I can go over the letter with you if you'd like. Otherwise, staff is recommending that City Council adopt the motion approving the stage, the combined Stage One, Stage Two Design Submission.
Any comments? Mr. Weber.
Is the public hearing open? Okay. Since we just received this letter from Crusoe Affiliated, obviously staff not had a chance to analyze it, I guess, and incorporate any of their conditions they would like to see. So would you go through all five?
Sure, sure. The letter posts five comments. The first comment is, what is the material specification for the stone at the base of the building? That's a black porcelain tile.
Do you have a sample of that?
Yes, we do.
Yes, yes, they do.
Maybe we can pass it around while you're talking.
Sure.
That's porcelain wall.
I'm sorry?
It's going to have to be black.
That's what they're proposing.
I'll ask them then.
Yeah. Okay, would you like me to go on?
Yeah.
Okay. The second, please incorporate a show window to the building south of the Brand Boulevard entrance. The walls along both Brand and Broadway are sheer walls, and so there isn't an opportunity to really put show windows any more than they have them. That's why they haven't proposed any at that location now. They're just constraints as to the sheer walls.
Roger, can you describe what a sheer wall is? Or Stuart just walked in, perhaps Stuart can.
He's probably better at it.
He's behind you.
Stuart, why wouldn't a sheer wall allow itself to be perforated by their doorways or windows, large windows?
In general, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in general, sheer walls can be perforated to a limited extent. However, the location and extent to which the holes within those sheer walls are located have to be carefully considered to make sure that the overall integrity of that wall is not compromised in a manner in which the wall does not behave as one unit, but rather disparate units on either side of the opening. Just by adding up the linear dimensions of that wall, the individual components may not be as strong as a continuous section.
Is that the support retaining wall? Retaining wall, is that?
No, a sheer wall is intended for one primary purpose, and that's to resist lateral loads usually imparted by either wind or seismic forces.
Either what kind of forces?
Wind or seismic forces.
Seismic.
Okay, go ahead with your.
Thanks. All right. Please incorporate a large projecting Bloomingdale's blade sign to the Brand Boulevard building facade so as to identify the Bloomingdale's location to pedestrians and vehicles on Brand Boulevard. At this juncture, signs are not evaluated yet. At this point, Bloomingdale's is not proposing that sort of sign. They may change their mind.
Sign, is it?
A blade sign is basically.
Projecting out?
Yeah, it's, here's the wall, and it projects out.
All right.
From the wall perpendicular.
I see, okay.
Number four, condition, the glass entry to be open during all hours Bloomingdale's is open. It will be, that's an ADA requirement.
Why would it be closed?
Well, they, I'm not sure necessarily why it would be closed.
If the store hours are open, why would you close the front door?
Well, there's another access to Bloomingdale's through the mall. I'm not sure why they would close off a door from Brand Boulevard to, into the store, but it cannot due to access requirements.
Fire code?
I'm sorry?
Fire code?
Probably fire code as well, but I haven't double-checked that. The fifth comment, encourage Bloomingdale's valet on Brand Boulevard. They're working to get a valet station there.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, why would they put a valet on Brand? There's already, it's pretty congested over there. If you put valet, it's going to be even more congested. It's going to take up some of the, or is it going to be by the entrance of the parking?
I believe it's going to be fairly far south of the intersection.
That has to be evaluated by the traffic engineering section. And if it doesn't work, it won't work, but I think that the takeaway is that they're looking at it, so.
They're working with traffic and transportation now to set up a valet station there.
There's no traffic lane there at all, where you could have cars stopping in a traffic lane.
But you don't want a traffic jam there, I think, is the end.
That's what I'm referring.
But a little further down, there's that little alleyway, there's a driveway a little further down at the end of the building.
That goes into the parking lot.
That's a driveway, though.
Maybe that's why it's further.
All right, that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it over to the Macy's people.
Macy's people?
Macy's?
You mean Macy's.
Part of the family of.
Oh, oh, the family tree.
Need your names for the record, please.
Okay. I just, my name is Bruce Quizno from Macy's Incorporated, which we own both Macy's and Bloomingdale's. So I just wanted to introduce our team, where we've got Kevin Kennon, who is our design architect here, who would do the presentation. We've got our architect of record sitting in the back. If there are any questions in detail from either one of these gentlemen can answer it. Then I've got a director of construction in the back that can answer any other questions we came, come to. Just as a minor thing, we would not shut that door. We've never shut an outside door, so I can't think of a condition where we would. And I think that the folks from Crusoe are just trying to make sure that that was the case, because there's been a lot of communication already between them and us and GGP, the developer, that, you know, we're all going to work together to get people back and forth and get them back and forth in a very safe manner. So I think that's what was more critical in their comment, was just to make sure that we were all continuing to think of that issue as we go through it. So I will let Kevin take over.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's very, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Kevin Kennon. I'm of Kevin Kennon Architects. We're based in New York City. I did grow up in Los Angeles, and we are the design architects for the new Bloomingdale's store, we're also the design architects for the Glendale Galleria. So we're very familiar with a number of the issues pertaining to the design of the store itself, but also to the mall as a whole. And our goal here is to try and create, it's really a unique opportunity, to try to create a harmonious identity that works with both brands. So if you look up here to the image on the screen, you'll see the location, does this have a pointer by any chance? Yeah. The location at the nexus of Broadway and Brand Boulevard, I would venture to say probably one of the most important intersections that there is in the city. And clearly, the image today is one of a very, sort of almost fortress-like appearance, much in the same way that the rest of the Galleria is, which we're working very hard to transform that image, and I think that's going to be a huge success, what we're able to do, both the inside and the outside of the Galleria. But the opportunity here for Bloomingdale's is to create a whole new identity at that corner. At the same time, there are some challenges and limitations, principally having to do with the structure, so, which does limit the amount of openings that we can put in the building itself, but we think we found a very interesting way of handling this. And I think you'll, if you can just look at the before and after pictures here, this will give you an idea of what the building will look like, should you approve the design, and what it looks like today. Clearly today, there's really, it's very difficult to identify where the front door is. It's, it is right here, but you wouldn't know just by looking at that sort of rather dismal arcade. One of the things that, really, the more important element that we've been able to do with Bloomingdale's is to create a brand-new entry, double-height entry, all-clear glass, directly off of Brand Avenue, and it's located about, say, 50 feet from the corner here of the intersection of Brand and Broadway. And by the way, if you have any questions during this, feel free to jump in. And that will carry you up to an escalator that brings you to this, the ground level of the store, which is actually the ground level of the mall. If you call, the mall actually starts over here at what we call G2, part of the Galleria, at the second level. The ground level will be occupied by a new tenant. Are we allowed to say who that is? Okay, Fixter's Living, and a furniture exhibition store. And new openings here are created to have both views into the store, glass openings, as well as window displays where we can. We do have some, again, sheer wall conditions that are behind the glass, which limit the amount of apertures or openings that we can get through with views into the store. But certainly here, and I believe over in here, and here, we'll be able to see directly into the store from there. As what, the entire facade along Broadway spans from this corner, almost 400 feet, to this corner right here, and a little bit beyond. And we'll talk a little bit more about each facade and what's going on, but I did want to make sure that everybody understood essentially the entire dimension of the Bloomingdale's, which is, occupies the first two, top two levels, all the way to about here, and then there are essentially two tenants, one Fixter's Living, and another tenant, I don't know determined yet, who will occupy the ground floor here. Again, these are different views from around the store. So at the intersection here, you have what was the old Borders. I'm not sure what it will be today, but it certainly is a very dynamic architectural feature of glass. You have another prominent buildings at the corner, and we certainly want the new Bloomingdale's to be a significant contributor to the architectural character of this intersection. And so what you will see here is essentially from this line to this corner, and from this corner to this corner, the entire facade is treated, completely, the entire brick facade, I should say, has been completely refinished from top to bottom. And there's essentially two strategies that we employ to do that. Where the base of the building, this black base here, meets the ground, it will be composed of this black tile, which is a tile that we spent a lot of time researching while we were designing the Galleria. It's very, very difficult to find a porcelain tile that has that absolute black color to it, and we've been successful in finding that. It's a very durable material. In many respects, it's more durable than stone. It's the same material that, for example, is being put in the floor in various places in the mall itself, as well as some of the walls. So there's a continuity of the material, as well as an elegance of the material itself. Within that, now, where there used to be a kind of arcade, will now become these show windows, glass with aluminum surround, a kind of beautiful, simple detail around them, with a new entry to Fixter's Living here, and again, the entry to Bloomingdale's here with a glass canopy above. So even at night, you'll have terrific views into the store, and if Bloomingdale's does what they normally do with their stores, and by the way, this is the 15th store that we've designed for Bloomingdale's, there will be an incredible visual spectacle that you'll be able to see at night, looking through that window. And speaking of night, let's, I'm going to jump back here in a second, but the other element here that is the dominant feature of this is this mosaic pattern, which is a blend of different materials, of the black tile, of white aluminum, silver, painted aluminum, and white marble. And it sort of, if you will, transforms from the black all the way to the white of the corner, where we get a white Imperial Danby marble corner, almost pure marble, right at the corner, with this strong, the strong slot, which will become a light, if I can go back here, you can see here, a cut into that facade, which would be illuminated at night and become a strong visual focal point for the building. These panels, just to give you some sense of scale, are two foot by two foot. So the square panel that you have before you is one foot by one foot, so it's double that size. And it's quite a long facade and quite high, and we think that this will create incredible visual interest on what is essentially a flat surface. One of the elements about this is the way in which the building glows during the day in this kind of fractalized pattern here, this pixelation, and then at night, it becomes quite something else. We've, we build out the wall, the base here, right to the edge of the property line, so it comes out about nine inches from the face of this surface right here. And within that, we hide a light fixture, which will illuminate, wash this wall at night. And then as accent lights, we've interspersed with the various materials, glass, translucent glass panels, which would then also be illuminated. So during the day, it would be translucent glass, and at night, it would glow.
Question. Look at the plans in that view. The entranceway appeared to be lit on the entranceway on the one side. Is it on both sides? Around the perimeter? Yeah.
This entrance right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, would be illuminated internally, yes, both sides.
The plans seem to indicate just, I guess, the way this view was shown, I couldn't see it.
Okay. Yeah, there is one entry off to Brand Avenue. It's a double-height entry, so you're actually seeing up to the ground.
I understood all that.
Yeah.
But I just wondered, the lighting pattern goes.
Yes.
The whole way around the entry.
Yes, that's correct. And then this is a view looking east along Broadway, towards the corner here, that the actual store itself goes to right about there. And so this maintains the original brick that you see today, and then the new identity really starts there. This is just the elevations of, so you can see the intricacy of the pattern here, which is truly going to be something spectacular. And then just a little bit, the description of the wall section showing how that sort of hidden light feature really exists as a result of building that base out nine inches to illuminate that entire wall. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Only one, I gather, that you not structurally attached these 24 by 24 pieces.
Yeah. Yeah, the pieces themselves are actually incredible material. They're lightweight aluminum backing, they're honeycomb backing, so they're very lightweight. So we're able to secure them to that facade. The facade itself is.
Only the lower portion.
That's only the lower portion.
The black up above is a lighter weight.
The black up above would be primarily aluminum, so. It's a good question. So, but the one thing we know from working with the Galleria is that that wall is really built like Fort Knox. I mean, they don't build masonry walls like this anymore, they usually do veneer, but this is true masonry. It's bonded to the concrete backup. It's structurally very sound, and it, one of the reasons why it makes it so difficult to make openings in it as well.
Any other member of the team that's going to present, or?
No, that's it.
That's it? Any other questions? Mr. Najarian?
The entrance will take you into the mall eventually?
Yeah, let me see if I can go to a plan, because I think that's important. So here's what would be the ground floor of Bloomingdale's, which is also the ground floor of the, this level of the mall, what we call G2. So that's the entrance to the mall right here. So you'll be able to come up from Brand, up these set of escalators, and go all the way through into the mall. So it would become another entrance into the mall going through Bloomingdale's.
So it'll take you to the second floor, and then you enter. The ground floor is that Fixter's Living or other retailers?
Right, right. And just, I know it's a little confusing, but the second floor of the Bloomingdale's, second floor of the building, I should say, is the first floor of Bloomingdale's, which is also the first floor of the mall.
Okay.
In this location, you know, you cross the bridge.
And the entrances for the Fixter's Living, are they also available from Brand, or do they have to come in?
We're showing an entrance here.
Okay.
Off of Brand, and an entrance here off of Broadway.
Okay.
Mr. Manukian?
So does, oh, I'm sorry. It's certainly an improvement from what we have there today, but I was hoping that the new design would have larger windows or things as, on the parts of the walls that are kind of sheer, just straight walls. I was hoping that the design would incorporate more of open windows, as opposed to just putting facade on an existing wall, basically.
Okay.
And you and Mr. Stuart Tomlin have already mentioned that's a sheer wall, and it's difficult putting holes in the walls and creating openings in those areas. But could someone walk me through that again, exactly why we can't put larger windows in the walls?
Well, I do want to point out that we have, clearly, this right here, the entry, doesn't exist today.
Right.
Which is a very large opening, and we're having to do some quite significant structural, let's call it shoring, in order to accomplish that. So I think the area that you might be talking about would be right in here.
No, actually, I'm talking about the second floor and on Broadway.
Yeah.
Right. The second floor opening up large, large windows.
Yeah.
Where things could be visible from outside instead of just a wall as you're coming down south on Brand.
Right. Okay, well, why don't you try the structural, I'll do the architecture.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by looking at this building, it's pretty apparent that the original design utilized what's referred to as a sheer wall type of lateral force resisting system. It's fairly common by modern building standards today to get away from a sheer wall form of resistance by utilizing a structural frame. If this building had been originally designed with a structural frame, panels in between the actual frame vents could be removed and glazing could be.
I have to qualify my statements and my question by saying that I don't know anything about building and structural frames, or sheer walls, or anything that deals with construction. Tax law, I can discuss it with you, but construction, you have to talk to a layman.
Understood. In that case, best way to describe it is the type of building design of the original structure is not compatible for conversion to a building that would have a lot of windows. To move away from a massive wall-type resistant system would literally require a reconstruction of this entire portion of the building to get to a light frame-type skeleton.
The walls would have to be taken down to do it, basically, is that what you're saying?
The walls, the floors which serve as a diaphragm, it would require reconstruction of pretty much the west end of this building.
Okay. Thank you.
Friedman?
So which of the show windows are Bloomingdale's, and which belong to the other stores on the ground level?
On the ground level, they, all of the stores at the ground level belong to the tenants at the ground level.
There are no Bloomingdale's windows anywhere.
There, you would get Bloomingdale's windows, sorry, here at the second level, so those windows are converted into Bloomingdale's windows.
I mean, the show windows, or just windows?
You know, I think we're still a little early in the planning to know, but the answer would be at least show windows, if not actual views into the store. They would be something special, though. And then, then you'd also have the window through here into the store from the exterior. So that's the, that's the way you look into the store.
And then, do you have a target for the type of business you want for the other tenant?
Well, that's really a GGP question. So I don't know if they're here.
You'll have to come to the voting and give us your name for the record.
Hi, it's Dave Cuthill from General Growth Properties. The remainder of the former Mervyn's store at grade. The, the remainder of the former Mervyn's store at grade, so on the Broadway and Brand, is a tenant named Fixtures Living. We have a fully executed lease, they're a very exciting tenant to bring to Glendale.
I thought there was a second, is there a second space there as well?
Well, there's, it's the former Todai restaurant space, if you move going west on Broadway.
I understand, I, I see their name, I mean, I got that, but I thought that someone had mentioned that there was another tenant that would be coming.
No, right, right, right now-
Probably covering the whole ground floor.
The Fixtures Living takes the, the balance of the ground floor and the Mervyn's milling, and there's, we have not yet leased the former Todai space.
Okay, so that will, so what about for that, are there a certain type of tenant you're looking for, for the Todai space?
So, so she's talking, she's talking about that?
Yeah.
Oh, well, we're, we're trying to market it to the, the best tenant available, and we just simply don't have a tenant yet for it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
You bet, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I have a comment. For going into the design, I like the design a lot, but what I hate, what I'm really embarrassed is that there's an In-N-Out Burger right next to it. I'll be honest. I, I hope that the lease, that's not your fault, I know, the speaking, I'm looking at you, but I don't, I'm not putting that on you. I really hope there's something we can do that, I mean, we're even afraid to show it in our slide, it's got that, the colors are garish, the level of clientele and the demographic is completely opposite to what I think we're trying to bring to the Galleria and to their next-door neighbor, the Americana. I've been there a few times, it's a mess, they're sloppy, they're loud, there's youths, unsupervised youths making all sorts of loud noises, sometimes congregating and shouting each other out. That's more towards the evening hours, but I hope, speaking to staff, that we can encourage, and to the, to the General Growth people, I know they're probably a great paying tenant, and they probably have great revenues, but, well, we've got a Bloomingdales now, this is what Glendale has been striving for, for decades, and the Americana and a brand-new Nordstrom's, and right in the middle is In-N-Out Burger. I mean, I'm embarrassed. I don't know if anyone else is embarrassed, not to comment on the quality of their food, I don't think they make that great a burger anyway, but I think we should really work at finding some other use for that, that space. But the Bloomingdales itself, I'm thrilled, I love the color scheme, I love the lighting, and I think it's going to be a great boost to the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, you can sit down.
Okay, thanks.
No, let's have him stand up.
I have a, I have a card, by the way.
Well, you have a card? Let's take the card first.
Yeah, I'll have one speaker, Herbert Mulano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Mulano. I'd like to add my opinion on the presentation today, not only because I participated in the downtown specific plan, and I was one of the few individuals who participated in all of the meetings of the downtown specific plan. And all of you addressed a major issue that we discussed during that time, which was, how can we create an engaged pedestrian experience by having visual access to the interior of this building, and Bloomingdales is addressing that. But I was wondering if we're addressing only the, the, the shopping window as such element, or actually looking inside at the activity that takes place? One of the discussions that we had was what makes Colorado Boulevard in Pasadena, Old Pasadena, successful? And what makes it successful, it was, it was presented that there virtually is no blank walls anywhere. You know, you go from shop to shop, and it's an experience where you can see inside every store as you go through. And there's a significant variety of, of activity that makes Pasadena, Colorado, such an attractive place to go to. Now Glendale has a significant problem in that Brand Boulevard is extra wide, so you don't get this nearness and this tunnel approach where you can see across the street and get a sense of, of this conviviality and, and energy that you get in, in, on Broadway, I mean, in Colorado and Pasadena. So I had a few questions with regard to that, whether this visual access to the interior would be to the actual store itself rather than the, the windows, which in a way closes up the activity and the engagement with the public. Also like to know if the traffic flow would be impeded somehow by some of the plans you have with regard to the, to the valet parking. You see, Brand Boulevard already has several mid-block crosswalks that are controlled by the pedestrian, and now we have the diagonal crosswalks going into the Galleria. And I don't know if you noticed, but the traffic on Brand Boulevard has decreased significantly, the flow has decreased significantly. At least it feels that way, because there are too many blockages along the way, and too many ways in which pedestrians can actually block the traffic by doing this mid-crossing. I think Santa Monica has handled that pretty well by doing self-timing crosswalks that at a specific time, they're timed to cross, and you get better traffic flow. It is my hope that as Bloomingdales comes to fruition, that the city planners look towards engaging the rest of Brand and the rest of the property owners to really try to create an, an excitement and an environment, and perhaps Bloomingdales could use something used in Hollywood to make that blank wall, at least on Broadway, more exciting. Anyway, those are my opinions, thank you very much.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, I think I heard today that staff is looking at valet, it may or may not work, if you're looking at it, because you don't want to impede the traffic flow. And looking in, I think we've been told some of the windows you will be able to see into the interior of the store, right? Okay, that answers those questions. I know people work at Macy's, and I've been told in the past, a store of this, or just about any store out there, has to store merchandise. Now you either store it inside, and, and the customer comes out where the window space is, or you store all the goods along the back wall, which obviously happens in this case. And then when you come in a shop in the interior, the clerks go to the back rooms, which are all along the outside walls. The reason I know that happened is I remember Circuit City, Maryland and Brand. I sat here and I fought, probably, yeah, I sat here and fought for more windows in Circuit City, especially facing out onto Broadway. They put them in, and when you drove by after it was constructed, it was wall-to-wall material, all their supplies, all their TVs, you couldn't see in at all. They couldn't put them on the interior because the customers were there, but they had to put them along the walls. You can't have it both ways. It's obvious what they're doing here. As far as the structural side, I clearly understand the structural limitations on the site. Many years I've said that that entire structure ought to be dynamited and rebuilt, because I knew you couldn't modify it cheaply. You greatly surprised me with this approach. It's light, it's airy, a black border kind of acts like a podium, sets the upper two floors separate from it. With the light at night shining up, it's going to do good. I remember back in the 1940s, that used to be the Bank of America Building. Go over there with my father when he was doing his business at the Bank of America. This transition now into this, and I figure in 20, 30, 40 years, that'll have to be upgraded, somebody will tear it off, and see this beautiful brick facade that was put in in the 1970s, and they'll declare it a historical thing, and will have to keep the brick. And just see it coming, I won't be around, I'll be up there laughing about it. But this, with the light accent that you're putting in everything, I think it really, it's really going to do a number, it breaks up the mass. I, I don't know if the tenants on down the street will want to do anything, I don't know what Caruso will do with the former Macy's, is it Macy's? No. Yeah, Nordstrom. What they'll do with that, with the facade, will they tear it out or whatever? But in the 70s, that was the end, the end thing, build a fortress, and everybody liked to be inside where it was cozy. Times have changed. Outdoor living experience is the whole thing today. So I'm surprised you could do that much. Brand and Broadway was the center of Glendale, not down where the Americana is, was the center. I think you're going to do a great job there, I can't wait to go in, and I agree with Mr. Najarian, In-N-Out doesn't belong there. That's owned by the Galleria, right? You'll, you'll decide if you ever move it. Maybe Bloomingdale, well, they get in, you may have a different opinion later, that can easily be changed. But I like it very much, and, oh, you're from New York, you people, are you Giants or Jet fans? Because this looks like Raider colors.
I don't know if you're a Jet or Giant fan, but maybe the Raiders will be back in town, they'll probably come shop there.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Let me deal with the In-N-Out Burger issue first. I don't have any problems with it, to tell you the truth, I think the design is quite garish and stands out, but in terms of offering dining opportunities on all levels here on Brand, I think that's important, so quite frankly, I haven't, I think I've been there twice since they opened. But anyway, I'm fine with In-N-Out. I do like the design very much, I think you've done a wonderful job, I think it's going to especially look good at night, and I'm not concerned about not having a show window on the south side of the entrance. I think the entrance works great. In terms of a blade sign, quite frankly, I don't think you need it, and I think it's going to detract from the design. I think what you've come up with is going to stand out at a distance as you drive up and down Brand, which is the principal street, so I don't think there's going to be much of a need for a blade sign. The valet, if it works and doesn't impede traffic, I think that's a, a good concept. I am concerned, you're showing some very nice trees, and I do hope that you work with our city arborist to see what type of trees you could put along this stretch, both on Brand and on Broadway. I think something elegant, something that reflects the Bloomingdales brand, I think that'll be, that'll really add to, there's a lot of traffic on that corner, and I think that's going to soften the look somewhat, certainly provide some kind of shade or green during the hot summer days. But I'm very happy with the design, I think you've done a great job of incorporating what is an old design in an old building. And then your tenant is someone that I'm, or a company that I'm, we're not at all familiar with, but I assume that it's going to work for Bloomingdales, it's going to work for General Growth, and so we welcome them to the community. In the meetings we had, we were kind of given a, an idea of what the concept is, and it's certainly intriguing. And the event it doesn't work, that's still going to be a signature corner, so you'll always be able to bring in another, another tenant, and that goes for the Todai location, so I'm happy with the design.
Just add one thing on the trees, don't bring in shrubs. Got to plant mature trees that get some height up against that white A1, I think.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I stand up?
Ms. Menucha?
Thank you. Um, I, actually, I don't have a problem with the In-N-Out either, for the quality of the-
Just don't go there.
I don't go there, but-
Likewise.
My kids do, so it's not a problem. I'm not necessarily pleased with the design. I, for years, years and years, we've talked about opening that corner up to Brand, and I, I thought it was a fairly simple thing to do, but I guess it's, from what our building official described, it needs considerable work, so, and I'll, I'll believe him, since he's the expert and I'm not. I was hoping for more, more of an open feeling for, for this, for this design. And, but I, I, you know, I liked the, the night version of, of the design, I think it looks good, it doesn't make it seem like it's one straight wall from one side to the other, especially on Broadway, because Broadway isn't broken at all, it's just a continuous wall. And I would like to see that open. But I will, I will vote for it, I think it's a, it's a vast improvement to what we have there now, I'll put it that way. It's not what I would have liked to see, but again, it's a vast improvement, so I will vote for it, with one condition that we make the B a capital letter, can we do that? No, I'm just kidding.
Any other comments? Ms. Friedman?
We're getting a Bloomingdales. Since I first came on this council, I've been, every time I've had a meeting with General Growth or Caruso, all I've said is, I want a Bloomingdales, I want Bloomingdales in that Mervyn's space. Do you remember this? We had a meeting, I don't remember if it was you or with the previous people, but I've been wanting a Bloomingdales there since I came on this council, and I am so happy to see Bloomingdales coming in. I'm, hope it's not a legal conflict to say that I'm a total Blooming's girl, I have a Bloomingdales card in my purse, I go to Sherman Oaks to shop at Bloomingdales on a regular basis, and I really hate having to drive over there. And I think there's a whole lot of people on this side of town that hate having to drive to Hollywood or Sherman Oaks to go to Bloomingdales. I mean, everywhere, from this area to Pasadena, going east, going to Silver Lake, this is where they're going to come, and this is going to really make Glendale even more of a shopping destination than it is. This is the missing link that we need to really make Glendale the place to go to shop. This, plus the new Nordstrom's, is really going to put our downtown at an entirely different level. And I also think that even though what we've done in the downtown has some naysayers, I think that Bloomingdales coming here really shows that the investment that the city has put in its downtown, that the growth that we've encouraged, that the economic development that we've encouraged has really paying off in a very big way. And this is something that's going to be an economic engine for our city for a long time to come. Certainly raises the profile of our shopping, and as much as I love Old Town and it has a lot to offer, this is going to be the place to go, because there's nothing like this in Old Town Pasadena, there just isn't. We've been missing a higher-end department store in Glendale for a very long time, with all due respect to the old Nordstrom's. The new Nordstrom's will be that, but Bloomingdales will be that as well. And I'm really, really happy to see Bloomingdales here, and I want to welcome them, glad you're all here. I like the design very much, they certainly had limitations in terms of the engineering of the building, I think they did a great job giving it a complete facelift, it's a completely new look and a new feel. The black and white pattern is very elegant, of course, it matches the interior renovation that they're doing to the Galleria, so it's going to reflect that. I love the nighttime effects, the glowing squares is going to be really beautiful. Opening up that entryway and making that huge glass entry is really going to be much more inviting from the street than anything we had before. I agree, it was very hard to find your way into Mervyn's before, and right now, the only way people can get into the mall from that side is by walking through the parking lot, which is dangerous and really uninviting. And now people are going to have a very nice way to get into the Galleria from Brand Boulevard, and that will increase foot traffic on Brand. So I, I really couldn't be any happier. I Googled Fixtures Living while we were having the meeting, and they're a very interesting concept, for those of you at home, what they appear to be is a high-end kitchen and bathroom retailer. They seem to be a California company, and they only have, I think, four locations, look like Costa Mesa, San Diego, Rancho Mirage. So they're kind of a local, growing firm, and that's very exciting to have them come here. And I'd always thought that having something like that, having a design store in that, in this location would be great. I don't think we have anything like that right now in Americana or Galleria or anywhere on Brand, sort of a high-end furniture store, I was hoping maybe CB2, but I think this is just as exciting, just as interesting. And maybe you'll get CB2 for the Todai spot. But I'm just, I'm really, really happy with it, it's going to be great, all I want to say is, let's get building, let's get this thing done and in. When are you slated to open Bloomingdales? 2013 by Christmas of next year?
By the end of October.
By the end of October of 2013, so that's terrific. October of next year, we're going to have this beautiful new store. That blade lighting going down the side is really quite unique and, and nice as well. I don't know if, I guess it's not a blade lighting, but that re- I don't know, I guess it's not a blade lighting, but that recessed lighting. So I want to thank all of you for working with staff, I know there was some back and forth, and I hope that it resulted in a better project from your perspective, and just very glad to see this coming.
And do I have a motion?
I'll move, public hearing is closed, right?
I'll second it.
I'll move 1A.
Well, second it, I also want to make, I'm not in favor of the blade sign, by the way, I, I don't think, it reminds me of the hotels in Hollywood.
Neither am I.
Okay, well, we have three, three not interested in blade signs. Have a motion in a second, roll call.
Councilmembers. Councilmembers Friedman-
Yes.
Manukin-
Yes.
Najarian-
Yes.
Weaver-
Hi.
Mayor Quintero-
Yes. It's next.
Will we adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.